Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our special meeting of September 9th, 2021. Before we begin the work of the district, let us stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Just a few comments before we turn it over to Mr. Mathias, the Chair for this morning's meeting. Board, I gave you notice that Mr. Johnson assisted me in some revisions and approval of just a few, one change to the original recommendation that you saw on the second. This was a change in content. It was a change to provide some clarity and in no way changed the recommendation before you this morning. So following last week's meeting, there was some questions that arose regarding the term positivity rates and its reference to a CDC formula that uses the number of positive tests plus the number of negative tests. That is not something that we have access to. We would have no way of knowing who tests negative, nor would our Department of Health. So therefore, any reference to the recommendation or to the term of positivity rates has been replaced with a definition to better explain the intent, which the definition now reads the percent of the staff and students who test positive for COVID-19 within a school. So again, replacing the term that didn't apply of positivity rates with the definition. The remainder of the recommendation remains as presented to you on September the 2nd. I also want to mention to you this morning that as you came in the door, as we did last time, you were provided a sample data sheet to show how we would determine schools in red, yellow, or green. And there were questions about the 5% threshold and how that was established. So I've provided you another data sheet this morning with some additional information to show you how we are comparing each school population of reported cases to the average reported cases of the district. So the 5% represents approximately a 1% standard deviation from the average of the district. So I hope that this chart, providing you some additional information, makes it more clear in terms of how that was calculated or determined. And we do have staff here this morning. Should the board have any questions, he has spent hours and hours looking at various models and helped to establish the recommendation and the data that correlates with that before you this morning. So those are all my opening comments, and I will turn it over to you, Mr. Mathias.
We're not going to begin public input, but before we begin, I want to make a statement, a little housecleaning from our last meeting. I was thrown off my game a bit by one of the individuals that came to the microphone saying they'd contacted the Florida Ethics Committee and that it cleared some of the comments they intended to make. And that gave me some homework to do. So going back and looking at the Florida statute 286.0114 that establishes public input and allows anyone to come to the mic and speak to any topic. And then you move into our school board policy 0169.1, which follows that statute, but it also includes, under local board control, some of the parameters that will be allowed and not allowed. And I call it our civility clause. So when you come to the microphone, if you begin to attack a board member, as happened last meeting, and for that, Dr. Burns, I apologize. I will, I now have asked Mr. Johnson to be my civility police in following the policy and making sure we're within the law. If he motions that it's out of control, they will be gavelled and the microphone will be cut off, and you will be asked to leave the podium. So that's going to be the procedure moving forward, and as long as I'm Chair. So I do want to say 99.9% everyone was civil. If there are comments that are contrary to your belief, I would ask you not to make comments about it. If someone comes up and you support them, then certainly you can show your support for that position. Now, as we move forward with public input, we've had three and a half hours of public input. Oh, excuse me, there's one other one. We are going to be taking, do we have any Zoom? We have Zoom? Okay. So at the last meeting, we went speaker, Zoom, speaker, Zoom, speaker. This time, we will go speaker, speaker, for those of you that have come out and want to speak. And then we will take Zoom third, so it'll be speaker, speaker, Zoom. So that's the new difference. Okay? Okay. And then I would ask that with the three and a half hours that we've already heard most of the generalities and we know positions, if you can speak to this recommendation at some part of your presentation, that would be amazing. So now we're ready to go, but I don't have any of the cards. You had the golden ring last time.
Get here early. Good morning. Thank you. What should communities do? Community leaders should encourage vaccination, and we know students under the age of 12 do not qualify. So therefore, the masking to prevent further outbreak, especially in the area of substantial or high transmission. What can I find out what my child's school is doing to protect my child from COVID-19? Ask your school their plan and protocol. They should describe COVID-19 prevention strategies, which I planned, that the Superintendent has done. What to do when a student, teacher, or staff member has been exposed to someone with COVID-19 and has symptoms of COVID-19 or tests positive? What does my child need to wear a mask while on the school bus? Yes. CDC issued an order on January 29th, 2021, requiring masks on public transportation, including school buses. Students and drivers must wear a mask on the school bus. What should my school do? CDC recommends universal indoor masking for all staff, teachers, students, and visitors to K through 12, regardless of vaccination status. Children should return, they recommended, to in-school learning. As the Honorable Judge has said, there's a danger for them to be out of school. Make the decision to protect our students, teachers, and support staff, because you are their role model. Regular COVID-19 testing helps to keep our schools open. That is what we want to do. Thank you for voting to provide safe and healthy learning environments to the community of Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sharon Bichard and Vance Yocum, welcome.
Good morning. Since I spoke at the last meeting, I don't see a need to beat a dead horse and verbalize my thoughts again. I'll only reiterate that I feel strongly that the decision to mask should be a parental decision. With that being said, I want to voice my support for Superintendent Corningay's recommendation. We need to keep our schools open. I applaud that she made a proposal that wasn't a cookie cutter approach. I think she gave a great analogy that when a fire alarm goes off in one school, we don't evacuate all the other schools in Lake County. You treat it on an individual basis. Her recommendations were data-driven. It's a proactive approach to a reactive situation. So as you vote today, I know you recognize that you're not going to make everybody happy, but it's time for a decision to be made, and I believe that failing to plan is planning to fail. In my work life, I've always reviewed my day by three things: what went right, what went wrong, and what could I have done different? I'd like to offer that perspective for the last meeting. What went right? First and foremost, the young man who spoke representing the student body at Leesburg High School, what professionalism. He was so articulate, and I'm sure he's going to be a game changer in this world. Second, the passion on both sides of the mask issue. It's obvious that we're all concerned about our children's safety. We're fearful for their well-being, their physical and mental health. What went wrong? The other side of the passion. The emotions are running high. But fellow Lake Countyans, we can do better. Our voices can be heard without the name-calling, mocking, spitting, and threats of violence. Let's represent ourselves as the parents, grandparents, and concerned citizens we are. Let's be honest, have morals, show empathy, value integrity, and be a good human. Let's channel our passion to represent ourselves in a professional way. We can agree to disagree in a respectful style. I thank you, school board, for your role. I know that although our opinions may differ, you're all part of this board because you care about our children's well-being and you're passionate about your beliefs. So I thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to a Zoom, but in the meantime, Mary Poschmann, you'll be Mary Poschmann. Okay, Zoom?
We have no hands raised at this time.
Okay, good. Mr. Yocum?
Vance Yocum, 12619 Milwaukee. I too agree that Superintendent Corningay's proposal, I think, is workable, because my view is that we have people in two completely separate news bubbles. We have people that are following the CDC, and I have absolutely no confidence in them as a person who has done a lot of research and came from a professional field that did research. I'm not a doctor, but I'm one that always put together cases and corruption and other things like that. And I'd like to say that I don't believe the CDC or anybody that quotes it. But I think that the two big areas that aren't discussed a lot is that we keep talking about positivity rates, but not about the fact, and the Superintendent did point it out at the last meeting, is that you have a very, very few students going to the hospital or having a serious case. It's like, and yet, nobody's talking about let's mandate masks for the flu and other diseases that cause it. Nobody is talking about, let's have a program to build immunity in people so that they can handle this kind of disease. Immune capabilities do it a lot. 80% of the people who have contracted and died from COVID-19 are obese. Okay? And so then the question is, why don't we have a program to get people to reduce their obesity so that they are not susceptible to things like that? I've spent the last year, because of a lot of this pandemic, doing research every day. I go out for two hours and I go through a lot of different YouTube doctor videos, real doctors with real patients, and they have five different alternative procedures for curing themselves of COVID when it's an early treatment. But yet, the hospitals and the CBC have told people not to give those early treatments to anybody until they come back and they can't breathe anymore, which means then they have to go into the hospital. Okay? I think this is a travesty. I think this whole controversy is pushed by the Democrats, who are taking an approach that they just want to solve a Linsky crisis to divide and create fear among people. And I think it needs to stop. And I congratulate the board here, the Superintendent, the staff back there that are cringing every time I get up to speak, that they have survived this, they've come up with a workable solution to deal with people in two separate news bubbles. And so I congratulate you on coming up with this. I think it was creative, and I say let's go with Superintendent's proposal.
Thank you. And thank you, Vance, for also sharing about our timer. So that's why Mrs. Luke's down there, so the timer in the front, that was new to us. So she's got the timer. Okay. Mrs. Poschmann, but in the meantime, Kim Cronin, come up. Go ahead.
Good morning, and I appreciate the Superintendent's work and dedication trying to come up with a unique solution where there is so much diversity, and we all care about the children. What I want to bring to it this time is my husband and I are originally from Wisconsin, and we thought we were going to retire in South America, but God had other plans for us, and he ended up being here, and we're very happy here. But we spent about two years touring different Central and South American countries. And when you do something like this and live in the communities, we would live in each community for one to three months, sometimes in the big cities, most of the time in the smaller to medium-sized cities, you get a perspective of things that you didn't even realize were part of your culture, were the way that you grew up. We spent about six months in Ecuador and over nine months in Colombia. We would be living in Manizales, Colombia, if we weren't here now. It's high on the mountains. It's the northern part of the Coffee Triangle. That's what gave the area extra income, and they built a large middle class. It brought in a number of international people, so you had a feel for many different areas. It also brought some wealth in, and to me, that was the big difference. These people had pride of ownership, if you want to call it that, not only for themselves, but for their community. They could help the community and the other people around them. They had a fairly large university in a relatively small town. They had a PAC, many parks, and other things with it. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. To me, this is the difference between a democracy and a republic. In a democracy, if you have a bike and somebody else wants it, they can lawfully take it, or a group, or a house, or your car, or whatever. In a republic, you have ownership, and no one can lawfully take that from you. To me, if you vote for the Superintendent's proposal, you are voting for democracy. If you vote against it, you are voting for a constitutional republic, which is what the United States is. It will make Lake County healthier, better educated, and more prosperous in the future.
Thank you. June Lang, you can begin to make your way up.
This is from Ms. Cronin.
Good morning, board members, Superintendent. So I really feel saddened and aggravated that we're here again today. You know, last year, we went through this. It was a quick sweep. We knew what we needed to do to put safety protocols for our employees and for our students. And today, we don't have those same protocols in place. I do, you know, last week, I was disappointed that you didn't agree to the Superintendent's plan. That was a step in the right direction. It's being reactive, not proactive. Let's be proactive. Last year, we started school off with dividers in between our students so they weren't catching the same germs. This year, we're not doing it. We're not even doing it until it's yellow. Community members all went out of their way to help build these things last year, to get them done so kids would have them when school started. You go into a school now, you don't see them. And you know, I keep hearing that our students aren't in the hospital. Luckily, they're not in the hospital. But we do have employees that are in the hospital. We have parents of these students that have died. It's time to do something and be proactive about it. I've gave you all some literature from different counties that are giving bonuses or wellness bonuses for employees that are vaccinated. That's being proactive. Wearing a mask is being proactive. You can't fill your jobs right now. We have employees that are out sick, employees that are in the hospital, and employees that are trying to cover everyone else's jobs. You look at the job postings since school opened, custodial and teacher assistant jobs, bus driver jobs, your buses are overloaded with kids without masks on. I was going to bring the executive order about public transportation to your attention, but somebody else already did that. I'm really disappointed. Last year, you were strong with this. In this year, you're not. Thank you.
Mrs. Lang, and then we'll have Connie Herlberg. Go right ahead. There's nobody on Zoom. Oh, wait a minute, there is a Zoom. Standby. Okay. We can have the Zoom then?
Jennifer Mulligan.
Mrs. Mulligan, go in once? Go in twice? Okay. Look at, go ahead.
Good morning. Last year, we didn't know a lot about COVID, so we were trying to throw everything at the wall and see what stuck and trying to keep everybody safe. Now we know a lot. And thankfully, kids are not in a risk group. So the efforts, the efforts of mitigation have been harming them. The depression rates, we all know this. I hate to reiterate it, but I feel like no one's listening. The mitigation efforts are harming them. Depression rates are up 800%. The masking is bacterial-laden cotton over their sweet little faces. There are two sides saying masks work or masks don't work, but no one's saying that the bacteria issues is incorrect. No one's saying that there isn't a cost to wearing those masks that isn't real. It is real. And we have a new Surgeon General coming in, apparently, in a couple weeks. And his new regulations and stuff might be completely different what's in effect right now. We don't know. And so I'm feeling like we're putting in policies, a forever policy, that might not even be needed. He might be doing something completely different. I am urging you not to put children on the forefront of a virus that they are not exposed to, that they are not at a risk for, that that's not going to be affecting them in a deadly way, not in a risk group. Step back, look at the big picture, see what's best for them, and not for all the people around them, but what's really best for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Elizabeth Emery, if you can begin to make it up to the front? Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Connie Herlberg. I live in Eustis, and I'm probably the only math nerd in the room, and I just want to thank you for preparing my handout this morning. Everybody has a copy of it. And I don't know how many of you actually know what she's talking about. There's a statistical analysis tool based on mathematics that is, it's, you can use it in a whole bunch of different ways. You could look at each one of these schools as a population, and you can plot on a graph the infection rate, the cases from one week to the next, and you're going to see this thing start to go up, and eventually, it reaches a point where it levels off, and then it just falls off. And that is, that is a statistical, statistically proven. This actually, this big spike right here, I know many of you can't see this, but the big spike on this one is from COVID, which lasted approximately from September last year, the big spike, and dropped off in February and was pretty much dead on arrival in March this year. Or is that May? I guess it's May. Anyway, this information is coming from the CDC tracker online. Any of you can get online, as long as you kind of understand what they're doing. And then we have this subsequent spike, and that spike, this was from my speech last week, had already started to taper off, and this actually was US. This was not Florida, but it was US. And I'm going to actually go back. Here's an article that is from the Berkeley Library that was May of last year, and here's the spike. It's the same shape. This is actually from the 1918 pandemic. Same thing. So it is a repeatable mathematical, you can apply it to eggs, you can apply it to frogs, you can apply it to cases of COVID and cases of Delta variant. And the reason why I know that we're on a different variant than we were last year is because there was a completed data set. Then we started another data set, and last week, when we spoke, we were at the very top. The very top, to me, indicates that we have reached herd immunity. And once we hit that, it's downhill. Now, I will only add one little, the first two data points on here, I see a 3.109.
Is that, that's the timer? You're done, thanks. Okay. The timers, thanks so much. The timer's new to us, folks, and that's why Mrs. Luke's way down there, because that's where the control is. Okay, so now we're going to go to Zoom again?
I have Jennifer Mulligan.
Welcome back.
Hi, can you guys hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I apologize. I was having a technical problem with my phone, so I've re-logged into my child's iPad.
Alexis Rodriguez.
I just wanted to start off by saying that a lot of these people have spoken before, and I can appreciate everyone's constant input. I chose, after waiting on the Zoom the first time, to reach out to my local school board member, and I cannot remember her name right now, but I just want to thank her for taking the time to write me back as a concerned parent. I have a senior at Tiberius High School, and I have a third grader at Astage. I'm not going to argue whether or not you should get vaccinated or not. That's a personal opinion. I'm going to speak to the Superintendent's recommendation. I feel like, as a parent, I've heard both sides. I've listened to both sides. I've agreed with both sides. Me and my family have chosen to be vaccinated, so I would like to thank you for giving my senior, a senior here, peace of mind. She doesn't go to school and worry like she did last year. My third grader, on the other hand, that's a different story. I have a third grader who has nightmares. I have a third grader who cries. My friends can attest to that. She's not the happy little kid she was, because in her class, when someone from the school knocks on the door, they hold hands. They wonder who is going to be taken out of their class. So I am obviously anxiously awaiting what the school board will do and what the Surgeon General will say as far as the contact tracing. But as far as this, dividers last year, my child had them in her class. They were taken down because they hit a student and caught a student in the head. So I will applaud her teacher last year for making the choice that they were not safe. I will also say that I feel like, right now, the lack of custodians, it should be a huge concern, because I know the classes aren't being cleaned properly. I think everyone who's custodian right now probably deserves the raise we're talking about, instead of giving it to someone for being vaccinated, because they're the ones in the classroom actually doing the job and cleaning it, and even though they don't have enough help, they're still out there every day. And as far as children speaking, I feel like, right now, our kids are in school. If my high schooler were able to miss her AP classes, she would happily be here to tell you what's really going on in the school. And one student speaking from a school is not a representation of the school as whole, just like each one of us, including myself, is not a representation. So I just think that this plan is a very happy medium. It fulfills both sides. It keeps the kids that are at higher risk at that moment a little bit safer. And I think that a lot of parents, like me, who have chosen for my child not to wear a mask at school because it bothers her and it keeps her safe mentally, I think it's kind of a happy medium. So I just thank the Superintendent for kind of going down the middle of the road and trying to appease both sides. But I just hope, as Lake County, we can all, like, put all of this aside and stop making this a political issue, and realize that these people were voted in to do a job and to make a decision, and it's their job today. So that's really all I had to say.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Emery?
So, good morning. Thank you to the Superintendent and the board for the opportunity to speak with you today. I also want to thank you for the time that you have spent on this issue and your dedication to finding the best solution for your stakeholders. I'm the Vice President of LCA, and I'm here speaking with you, representing the Lake County Education Association. I'm going to share with you some data that we did. We had two surveys that went out. One that went out in August and one that just went out this last weekend. That data, some of it is presented in front of you. The Kathy Smith just passed out to you. You'll also see in your email a comprehensive list of comments and reasoning to some of the, the choices that people selected on the survey. So feel free to take a look at that. It is not filtered in any way, so you'll see the full comments and reasoning. But I also wanted to thank you all. LCA had a great meeting with the district to discuss reopening plans for the school year. We are very pleased to have a signed in-depth safety MOU. So thank you for working with us to make that happen, for our educators and our students. Although we've made quite a bit of progress, obviously, our discussion here today shows that we have some work that we still need to do. You've probably heard Kathy say that LCA has revamped their website. We have added forms for educators to submit their concerns. We check these daily, and we are now up to about 15 pages of questions and concerns. We've also sent out surveys to Lake County educators, and we've received over 2,000 responses. The reports that we have received are from members as well as non-members. Many of the survey responses, form submissions, phone calls, Facebook messages, text messages, emails, and conversations have been about the quarantine numbers, workload issues, and safety concerns. So LCA did a safety survey to collect data about masks and vaccines on the 1st of August. We had over 400 responses in six hours. 62% of the survey responses said that masks should be mandatory, and 72% said that vaccines should be encouraged and incentivized. This data is from before the school year started, and they're responses again from members and non-members. Our second survey that was sent out this past weekend, we had over 500 responses. 69% support a more comprehensive mask policy. About 58% also said that they believe wearing masks should be mandatory. We also asked about the superintendent's recommendations as presented at the last meeting. The state is more split, about 52% saying they do not support the recommendation as presented. We also asked them to state their reasoning so we could get an understanding. We haven't had time to really dive into those comments, but again, those are emailed to you. We have been receiving lots of reports, as I'm sure you have too, about our education. Educational staff are being quite overwhelmed. They're being asked to create Google classrooms and digital assignments along with their in-person instruction. They're being asked to communicate with quarantined students and parents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. John Galt, you'll be next, John. Matt? Go right ahead.
Hello, my name is Alexis Rodriguez. I'm here today to state that I disagree with the superintendent's recommendation. We will only be adding more stress and anxiety to our children's parents and teachers. We will have to constantly be monitoring COVID cases. Leave it the way we have it. Parents who choose to mask their children still do have that option. Do you fully understand if a child, if my child's school reaches 5%, which is a red zone, we will have to now get an appointment from his pediatrician? Will take at least one week. To see his neurologist, it will take one to two months in order to get in to get the doctor's note for opt-out. My 17-year-old son is suffering from anxiety and depression. He was recently diagnosed last year. He is on five different medications to treat his mental illnesses. What happened to mental health? Where did it go? Did, did COVID take that over too? I gave birth to my children, not the government. It's my fundamental right to choose what is best for my children and my family. We do not co- We do not co-parent with you, the school board, or the government. You are waking a sleeping giant, because we all know what is coming next, and that's mandatory vaccines, okay? My son Noah, who's in VPK in, in Mineola Charter School, he loves his school, but it would be heartbreaking if I have to take him out if you make masks mandatory. I ask, I ask that you guys leave it how it is, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bernice, Bernice Hauer, if you'll begin to come to the front, and we'll, I don't see any Zoom, so go right ahead.
Mask mandates will lead to mandatory vaccines, mandated vaccines. Mandated vaccines will lead to vaccine passports. How long is it before then what we're doing? And we're already seeing it in certain schools. I've just spoken to a friend of mine out in a school in Claremont where their first-year student teacher is separating the class with masked and unmasked. So how long is it before it's water fountains? How long is it before it's buses? Are we going down that road? Is that what we're doing here? It is the parents' choice, not the government's choice, to co-parent our children when it comes to medical and health issues. The masks are already presenting problems when it comes to depression with our children. The percentage is through the roof. It's ridiculous. My child goes to school, and that smile may be the smile that she gives to another student that may save that suicidal child's life. You want to bring mask mandates in? Here's the extra cost. Don't bring them in without biohazard bins. Okay, if you're saying that this is a hazard on the scale that you are, it comes to biohazard bins, you're going to have to put your hand in your pocket, and you're going to have to get the expense of that for our children. If you're going to go it and do it, do it the whole hog, but it's going to cost you more money. I bought some props. Here we go. A chemical mask. We getting this? A chemical mask. Chemical warfare mask. If I want to paint houses, I'll wear one of these. Okay? A respirator. I own a company called Sanitation First, of which I deal with COVID compromised environments on a daily basis. This is what I wear, along with Tyvek suits. The deadliest virus in history. Have I made my point? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ken, Ken McCord, you'll be next. Go right ahead, ma'am. Please.
Oh, it's my turn?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, thank you very much. I'd like to bring up some items because it's not brought up too often, and that is, do you want the responsibility? This is by Dr. Rob Mondoli. He told Fox News, "New York dentists are reporting that half of their patients are suffering decaying teeth, receding gum lines, and seriously sour breath from wearing masks. We're seeing inflammation of people's gums that have been unhealthy forever," or they haven't, I'm sorry, "healthy forever," and categories in people who have never had them before. "Facial deformities. Masking children triggers mouth breathing, which has been shown to cause long, narrow faces, narrow mouths, high plateau faults, dental mallocation, gummy smiles, and many other unattractive facial features, according to the Journal of General Dentistry." At Oklahoma Press Conference, a Dr. James Mihahn, M.D., testified, "The reports coming from my colleagues all over the world are suggesting that bacterial pneumonias are on the rise as a result of moisture collecting in face masks." A CDC-funded review on masking in May of 2020 came to the conclusion, although the mechanism studies support the potential effect of hand hygiene and face masks, evidence from 14 randomized controlled studies of these measures did not support a substantial effect on the transmission of laboratory-confirmed influenza. And none of the household studies reported a significant reduction in secondary laboratory-confirmed influenza infections in the face mask group. If masks can't stop viral flu, how can they stop COVID-19? Oral masks in healthy individuals are ineffective against the spread of viral infections, writes Belgian medical doctors in an open letter published in the American Institute of Stress, September 24th of 2020. Evidence that masking is a source of control results in any material reduction in transmission was scant, anecdotal, and overall lacking. And mandatory masking is an exact opposite of being reasonable, ruled a hospital arbitrator in dispute between the Ontario Nurses Association and the Toronto Academic Health Science Network. One has to ask if you use common sense and reasoning. When you read all these reports on Google and stuff like that, when they say a mask that's on your face will not prevent you from getting as much oxygen or breathing in as much as CDC, because if it's loose enough, it's going to go around the outside. Now, if it's not around the outside and you're bringing it in, it's obvious that the COVID-19 is not going to say, the only way I'm going to get you is through your mask. That is not reasonable, nor is it conceivable. And I want to know whether you want the responsibility of saying that people should wear masks and that they have all these other problems that are available to them because of masks. And then I'd like to end, oops.
Thank you. Commissioner Walter Price. I'm sorry, I didn't realize you had a card or, so recognizing you, you'll be, you'll be coming up, please.
I support Superintendent Carnegie's proposal. I think it's nuanced, it's focused, it's well thought out. We have to realize that it may not be totally scientifically grounded, but politics does play a part in our life. It's an important part. If we don't let it come into a degree, then the system will fall apart. And I believe that part of this is politics. The opposition has for a long time, wanted, the opposition to my position, has for a long time put out the idea of fear. Fear sells. And the more fear they can install and instill out there in us, the more government has control of us, the more government feels it has the right and the people support the idea of more and more checks, higher welfare, longer periods of time of unemployment checks and so forth. And therefore, it buys votes. And that's what much of this is, and we, many of us don't realize it, but that is at the bottom of a lot of what we're doing. What percentage, I don't know if it's 10, 15, 20% of, of our belief, but it's there and don't we, and we don't know it's there. It's selling fear. I think that it comes to an old saying about, we've all heard this recently a lot, and that is that once the lie is out there, it's halfway around the world before the truth gets its shoes on. And for, like June said earlier, we've learned a lot over the last six months, 18 months, whatever, about COVID and what needs to be done about it. And the original bad information put out there, for whatever reason it was, and it may have been to hide the China problems, look at this Chinese object over here, as opposed to what is really going on, was put out there, it's all our fault, we've got to do this, we've got to do that, let's don't look into what somebody else has caused, because we got to do this and do that. And, but over a period of time, more and more sciences come out to show that the need for net mask, I mean, I've heard some figure recently, I can't remember the exact numbers, but the Delta variant size of the, whatever the item is called, is about either 10 or 100 times, I forget what, it was some ridiculous number, smaller than what the original COVID-19, I guess they call it whatever, 2 or whatever, Alpha, was. So we were wearing masks before and not sure about those, and now we're wearing masks with something that's 10 to whatever number of times smaller. And so what's it doing? I mean, no one's talking about not wearing, you know, everyone happened to wear the, the N95 mask. I support education and educators that promote reading and study and comparing different data, not just being taught a particular line of thought. We need to, both sides being taught accountability is important.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Andrew Bailey, you'll move forward, and Mr. Price.
Madam Superintendent, Mr. Chairman, school board members. My name's Walter Price. I live here in Taverries. For decades now, we have heard the mantra, "My body, my choice." And now, all of a sudden, we're being asked to, oh, no, 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 that doesn't apply. You don't have that choice anymore. It's the government's choice. It's, and you can now tell your children what to do. Well, as you well know, we are losing more and more of our individual rights and our freedoms every day. Mask mandates, the vaccine mandates, they sacrifice our individual liberty to a collectivist notion of a greater good. These mandates use the coercive power of the state to require a person to do something that they would otherwise not choose to do. This is really about government power and control over our lives, leading us ever closer to socialism. A recent buried study, published in Townhall.com, showed the infection rate of children in school where there were no mask mandates was actually way lower than schools where there were mask mandates. These kind of studies are always buried. In my own personal situation, I've had two of my own grandchildren get COVID. They were sent home from school, and in one to do, one to two days, they were back to being normal kids again. Soon as they got a negative test, which was as soon as they could get to a doctor and get a test, they were able to go back to school. We know the death rate among schoolchildren is very low. I saw this on Channel 9 News last night, 0.02%. Very small. Yes, thank you. We know, we know that kids don't wear masks properly. They're going to pull them down, they're going to tear them, they're going to get mucus in them. We know they cause breathing problems. I, I've known personally people that have gone to the doctor's office, sat in the waiting room, wearing a mask, and when they get into the back and get their blood oxygen tested, it's very low, it's at dangerous levels. As soon as they take that mask off, a few minutes later, their blood oxygen level returns to normal. If we, how do we, how do we expect our kids to perform well in school if they're not even getting the proper amount of oxygen to their brain? The parents need to decide what is best for their own children, not the school board. Thank you.
If Margaret Joseph could be in the, make her way up, and go ahead, Mr. Bailey.
Yes, I have two granddaughters that were just sent home from school in Claremont, and they were both told that they were positive tested, well, it came because there was a student tested positive. And they were sent home. They were told to take the test, their parents let them take the test, and then sure enough, they came positive. We knew they were going to be positive. Does anybody know what the PCR count level is set at right now? It could be up to 40, which shows 100% chance of false, false positives. Now, the CDC only has one guideline for the PCR, and that is, if you've been vaccinated, it can't be set above 28. And that is to get a lower positive result for the people who have been vaccinated. But if you're not vaccinated, you can, these labs can put it wherever they want. Now, there was news about that last year. They fooled us last year. Shame on them. If they fool us again this year, shame on us. We have to go by the science, not by what the school, teachers' unions are saying. Teachers- And I believe that's what the governor's doing. He's going by science, and we're, and Florida is ahead of the game. If you stop testing, you'll see the cases go down, and no other disease that I know of where, where people are, you get a case of measles, you don't know that until you get symptoms. When you get measles, you're a case. COVID is the only one I know of where you're listed as a case because of a test. It's, it's not even positive, it's not even an accurate test. So learn from Sweden and these other countries that are ahead of us, and learn that the kids have a boosted immune system. That's why they're not getting sick. That's why they're not dying. So let's just go with the facts. I know you have a hard decision to make, but what we're learning from the government this year is lies like they were last year. So let's just go by the facts. There's a lot of people out there that are being censored, who are trying to tell us Karen Kingston. I don't know if you've ever heard of her. Look her up. She has a lot of good information.
Thank you very much. Rose, Rose, and I think it's S C I O R I, okay. If you make your way, okay. And then we'll go to a Zoom real quick. Good morning, Ashley.
Hi, can you hear?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Ashley. I have a son that is in Lake County Schools. He is nine years old. He also has a cousin that is nine that is out of state. His mother ended up with COVID, and his brother, who's 15, ended up with COVID, and he never got it. She ended up in the hospital twice, had double pneumonia, double viral pneumonia, and they are both perfectly fine. My sister's 38, my nephew's 15, they're fine. My other sister, out of state, all of it, everybody in her family, six out of seven people ended up with COVID. Some just seemed like flu-like symptoms, but somehow they tested positive. They're all perfectly fine, did not end up in the hospital. Had an aunt out of state who has my cousin, who is in a wheelchair, who's paraplegic, and he cannot get the vaccine, it's not in his best interest. One out of three, just my aunt, got COVID. She ended up in the hospital, deathly ill. She is perfectly fine, and she drives a school bus for the county schools up and out of state. My nephew, two of my nephews that live in Palm Bay, they both got it different times, and there's seven people in their household. The first time, the 13-year-old got it, there was only two out of seven that got it, him and his mother. His mother is immune compromised, and she has transfusions weekly. She ended up with it, tried to get the vaccine, got the first shot, it made her deathly ill, she couldn't get the second shot, and she works in a nursing home. Ended up with it again just this week, a couple days ago. Her 16-year-old son got it this time, he didn't get the vaccine, he's perfectly fine. She got it, she ended up in the hospital with double pneumonia of both lungs, and she is that, she's half vaccinated. So the vaccination, I'm sorry, in my opinion, it's hit or miss. My mom got vaccinated, took care of my one sister in Ohio, she never got COVID. But seriously, the nine-year-old didn't get it. My son has been in school last year and this year, has not had it, not been quarantined. But my 15-year-old stepdaughter, who shares two households between us and Polk County, she got it. So out of my household, one out of five got it, and the rest of us did not get it. Out of her mother's household, one out of six got it, the rest of them didn't. And they have, I believe, a kindergarten and a second grader. So I'm against the mask. I think it needs to be, it's parents' choice. It's my child, not yours, and I'm not trying to be rude to anybody, but that is, our choice is apparent. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, we are here today to do what is best for our children, but we are living in a very fearful and closed-minded society. We all know that the masks do little to no good to protect from the spread of COVID. Yet we ask our children to endure wearing a mask for seven hours a day. Is anyone concerned about the harm from wearing a mask? Very few have considered what highly qualified doctors and scientists have to say. They spoke out in spite of being mocked, banned from social meeting, losing jobs, and even arrested without due process. We now know that in February 2020, the numbers of U.S. deaths projected was 2.2 million, not at all in line with 625,000 presently. After 16 months of false positives in the PCR testing protocol, the CDC withdrew the protocol. Inexpensive and highly effective drugs were not prescribed by most doctors, preventing the right to try. If this school district cannot present any evidence of having considered what whistleblowers are saying, then I think it is time for parents to take advantage of the hope scholarship of up to $7,000 to enroll in a school where their child will not feel harassed about their views on COVID or masks. Haven't we learned from history? We must judge truth from popularly held beliefs and even deliberate propaganda.
Ryan Kinnell. Go ahead.
I do thank you for putting our children back into our schools, because it is a detrimental standpoint for their health and well-being. With that being said, I am a mother of a student who has just went back to the schools because of not having a mask mandatory mandate. My son is a third grader that has an auditory sensory processing disorder, and he has high functioning anxiety, is creating a depression. His anxiety is highest when he is around people with masks. He cannot process what is being said. He is not able to digest the knowledge that he is being given because he cannot understand My third grader understands that people who are not properly expelling the bad bacteria while wearing masks, they have a higher chance of an unhealthy immunity. He understands that you run the risk of having bacterial pneumonia, bacteria bronchitis, and laryngitis, and other respiratory issues. The people who are having poor health are more likely to have COVID through continuously masking. If this was really about a health regulation, where is our true health reform in classes and in the students' schools? My child has also adenoid issues. Why would I take a mask and cover his face to where he can have natural oxygen and immunity? When he has a mask on, he is breathing what the body is supposed to be expelling. When you breathe it back in, you are continuously putting it back into the system. That's why you are going to have a continued sickness. If you do not teach true health and true natural immunity, then you are going to have a consumer society of what is going to be sick people. Why do we have so many sicknesses and illnesses? It's because true health is not being taught to our children. And when they don't know what to expect from the people who are confused, the misinformation, they just follow along. When they're being taught that this is a fearful society that we are living in, they become fearful, anxious, don't know what to do, don't know who to trust. And my third grader is afraid to go to school with everybody who wears a mask, because he understands shedding from the vaccines. He understands that natural immunity comes from health, not pharmacias, not anything like that, but from God's natural plants. Thank you.
Thank you. We can have Frank Hunt move towards the podium. In the meantime, we have a Zoom.
Laura Smith.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Laura Smith, and I have two children in elementary school, a kindergartner and a first grader. And I think it's important that we look at the elementary schools separately and differently from middle and high school, where you have middle and high school students who are eligible to be vaccinated, whether they choose to or not. You don't have that option for students in elementary school, they're too young. I do want to point out that last year, whenever we had the mask mandate in play, my oldest child was in kindergarten. I did not get a phone call every single day that there were new cases last year at our school. I have gotten a phone call every day since school started this year that there were new cases in my school. I'm not saying that that's related to the mask mandate, it's just anecdotal information, but I have gotten a phone call every single day since school started this year that there are new cases in my school, and the number, whether it's a student or an employee. I appreciate that, and I appreciate very much that our school's been transparent with that. It is very different this year than it was last year, and I don't know if it's because of the masks, but I know that they help in some way. My kids wear masks. They respect that coronavirus and COVID are important, that this is an important thing for them, and they understand it. And they understand that they're not just protecting themselves, but they're protecting those around them. And that includes me and my husband, and their grandparents, and the other children that they come in contact with when they play sports and things like that. They understand that, they respect it, and they choose to wear masks, so they do. I've heard a lot of people talk about how masks can become dirty and germ-ridden. Well, my kids go to school with about four of them in their book bags every single day that are washed and cleaned every single night, so whenever their mask gets smelly or sweaty, they change it out with a new one. These are not difficult things to overcome. I think we need to take a step back and remember that these kids go home and they interact with a lot of other people in their community, separate from their parents, every single day. And the more that we can do to protect them while they're in the classroom, so that they can continue getting the very good education that they are being provided in person, that's what we need to be doing. Now, my child last year, when he was in kindergarten, he was only quarantined once all year, and that didn't happen until the second semester after the holidays. He went straight to Lake Live for virtual instruction, and there was no gap in his education during that time. Now, my kindergartner that I have this year has already been quarantined once this year, and there was no Lake Live platform for him to pivot to when he came home to quarantine. He's been in school for a very short period of time, and he's already been quarantined once, and literally was just using Google Classroom and the tools that are available through the Chromebooks that y'all provide, which, but I appreciate those as well, it is very helpful.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Mr. Kinnell.
Thank you. My name is Ryan Kinnell, an 11-year veteran of the United States Navy, and, thank you. And for the past four years, I was stationed in San Diego, California, the totalitarian, the totalitarian state of California, and I saw what it did to my children in school. So when I separated, I made the decision to come here to Lake County, because this is where I wanted to raise my family. This is where I wanted my children to go to school, to escape that. And it seems like California's come here with the things that I'm hearing with some of these mandates. This comes down to freedom, in my opinion, and a parent's right to choose. I do not want my kids, I do not want my kids forced to wear a mask for a lot of different reasons. We've been told to trust the science for a year and a half, over a year and a half, and the science keeps changing. Things that were considered conspiracy theories and far-right things, that's, now we have Dr. Fauci, who's been changing his mind every single day, now he's saying those things. That's fine now. It's not about the science, it's never been about health. There's a reason that gyms were locked down and shut down, but McDonald's stayed open. It is never, this has never been about health. You've heard a lot of things, what the masks do to our kids. This virus is not a risk to our children. What is, are the masks. The depression, that is the biggest thing I'm worried about. How my kindergartner is interacting with people. We know that children, to communicate, they use facial expressions. That is part of learning how to be a normal person in society. We are teaching our kids that they need to be scared to death each and every day, that they need to be scared of something that is not a risk to them. Now, if you are one of those people that strongly wants your children to wear a mask, that you feel that passionately about it, I support you 100%. I support your decision as a parent. And the same goes with whether you want to get, whether you want to get vaccinated, whether you want your family to get vaccinated, those are personal choices. The problem right now is that we are months into this, 20 months into this, we've been told two weeks to slow the spread, six weeks to slow the spread. Well, you got a mask until you're vaxxed? None of these things have come to fruition. It is just a slippery slope that is continuing, and it will not stop until we stop it. I do respect the fact that this plan is multi-tiered, and it's not saying, well, if we just get this, then everybody's locked down, everybody's masked up. I appreciate that. But any plan that is taking the choice out of my hand as a parent, we should oppose, and I oppose it. Thank you.
Chris, Chris Hankus, Chris Hankus. Go right ahead, Mr. Hunt.
All right, thank you. My name is Frank Hunt. I want to address first, hadn't planned on it, but I want to address first the allusion to the board policy that was reiterated in the beginning of this meeting. I would like to draw attention to the board and your attorney, that the, about the 1964 Supreme Court decision of New York Times versus Sullivan. This was a 9-0 decision by the Supreme Court on First Amendment freedom. And in there, Justice William Brennan, who was considered a liberal, did the opinion, he said, quote, "Debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and that it may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials." The court put into place a more rigorous standard necessary for sustaining the maintenance of the opportunity for free political discussion, a fundamental principle of our constitutional system that is essential to the security of the republic. This Supreme Court and the First Amendment, local rules and policies do not supersede Supreme Court decisions and the First Amendment of our Constitution. In layman's terms, it says, if you can't take the heat, get out of the kitchen. Now, I'd like to turn to the mask situation. I'm going from a commentary on WorldNetDaily, manipulation of language in today's Pravda USA. Those of us who lived during the Cold War in the 60s and 70s know what Pravda and Avestia is. Those are the Russian communication of their news media. And the state media releases during, in Russia during that time, were, only the state media releases were to be trusted, Marxist censors quickly isolated and terminated other publications because they threatened the state's control. That's why freedom of speech is the foremost concern of our founding fathers. Masking is, the futility of masking has been validated, but the modern editors of Pravda USA and Avestia USA have decided that the opposition must be silenced. Masking has been opposed with true science for at least the past 12 months. New studies have only verified that the CDC NIH mandates are useless regarding the COVID-19 virus. They offer a scheme to destroy current civility and then from the debris, build a better civilization of equity and fairness, and they begin with language. This overreach by the CDC installs Marxist mandates in the USA. Never before in the history of our republic has a bureaucratic office like the CDC welded such unchallenged totalitarianism. Welcome to Pravda USA and Avestia USA. The saddest point of this whole analysis is the impact upon the nation's children. They are being conditioned to accept the surrender of personal freedom. They are being trained to cower before tyranny's mandates. If you want to get rid of your quarantine problems, your lack of people, then get rid of all the protocols. If you talk to any, if you talk to any, if you do that, you'll have healthy children who will learn better. And if you talk to pediatrician, cardiologists, and other doctors, the exchange of germs is vital to our immune systems. If you don't have exchange of germs between the people, we can't keep our immune systems strong. By masking and putting all those protocols and cleaning everything, you're taking away germs, and our immune systems are being decreased, particularly our children. That's why they have such a strong immune system naturally, and that's why they're not arrested for this thing. So we'd like, and I'd like to ask all these parents who want masked children in schools, have they spent five days a week, eight hours a day in a mask? Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Barnett and Angie Connor, if you'll make your way up. It doesn't matter, but I'm going to go to Zoom real quick. Okay, Zoom.
Katie Swanson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. In the spring of the school year, parents begged and pleaded for masks become optional for their children. We're met with a response, "Eight more weeks of school, just hang in there. We made a promise to parents that masks would be instated for the entirety of the school year. Fast forward to the fall, we're told masks are optional, you have a choice." The only thing we ever wanted, went to meet the teacher, and the vast majority were not wearing masks. We could see smiles, my kids could see their classmates and their teachers' faces for the first time. But with that change comes outrage. Parents who want masks mandated are unwell. They simply cannot comprehend the meaning of the word "choice." So what does the school board's assignment to do? Pander to them. Those promises made to parents last school year are meaningless now. Kids are dying, stop being selfish. Those words are thrown around with such passion and such anger, but many of those who stand by those words, those who are fighting for the mandates, show nothing but hypocrisy outside of school walls. Many of those same parents still send their kids to birthday parties, they still visit out-of-town relatives, they still go to restaurants, they live their normal pre-COVID lives. Does COVID only matter between the hours of 8:00 and 3:00? No one is telling that they cannot tell, no one is telling parents that they cannot send their children to school in masks. On the first day of school, I told my kindergartner and my second grader this exact statement. There will be kids with masks again this year, and there will be kids without. But it does not matter, because that is their choice, and you will respect them. Masks are not a one-size-fits-all scenario. Just because your fifth grader can wear a mask properly without issues, doesn't mean my kindergartner doesn't struggle. What is right for What is right for one family may not be right for another. Each child and each family deserves the right to medical freedom. All we ask is to keep masks a choice. And one last thing, you will get sick again. You will get a cold, you will get the flu, and more than likely, you will get COVID. Don't worry though, you'll be fine. I'm 99.997% sure of it. This entire thing is food poisoning to high poverty, afraid to ever get sick again. Fear does not stop death, it stops life. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, you, Mrs. Barnett?
I'm sorry.
Your name?
Angie Connor Eustace.
Okay, we got this. Is there Mrs. Barnett? Excuse me a second. Is there Mrs. Barnett or? Okay. And then, then the last one, Chris, and I called this earlier, H A, looks like U K D O S?
Oh, okay.
Okay, okay, you'll be after, okay, stand by. All right, go.
Hi. I first want to say thank you for all the hard work you've put in on this issue. I've seen you guys more than once in the last month or so, but I am here today to ask you to please follow the law. Until the judge's order is set, the executive order is the law. There's also Florida statutes in place that prevent you from having the power to mask our children. So you say, follow the science. Well, recently I was listening to a person who is very versed in the science of it and she brought up a really good point. Science is ever-changing. We used to give chloroform to our children. We used to give people cocaine for medication. We used to tell people that smoking was healthy. Science changed on all of that. So how is it today that you can say without a doubt that the science that they have on this issue is in fact the correct science? It could change tomorrow, it could change next week, it could change in a year from now. It's already changed in the last year. It is ever-changing. So, that said, with science, with regards to the mask, there is a gap. There is never a perfectly sealed mask in what we are able to access unless you have an N95 that is specifically fit to the child's face. They fidget with them. And let's talk about bringing four masks in their backpacks. Are they sealed in a, a clean package once they use it? What are we doing with it? It's a biohazard. You gotta, you gotta dispose of it in a biohazard way. Do you have biohazard containers for those? Are they disposing of them in a biohazard way? What I would like, I had some other things I wanted to say, but I would really jump, rather jump to this. It isn't, first, it is not a political issue. It is a constitutional and a God-given right issue. Now, parents, parents, you need to hear this. I have less than, I have just about a minute left. Parents, once you sign that opt-out, you have admitted to the school board, the world, and everyone that they actually have the right to mask your child. Don't sign it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm not going to butcher it again, if you can come up. Go ahead, Mrs. Barnett.
Good morning. I have two children here in the Lake County school system. I'm not a scientist, but I do follow a lot of information and I do believe in getting information from both sides. And when only one authoritarian group is used to, their data is used to control all the students and mandate that all students wear masks, I think that we need to take other data into consideration. We do know a lot more about COVID than we did last year. We were trying to do everything and throw in the kitchen sink to prevent it. We all love our children. Masks do not work. I think it should be the parent's choice. And when you're a leader of the data that you are proposing to all of us to use as a standard, constantly changes the data to match their needs, constantly uses that data to enforce on other people's rights and freedoms. It's my body, my choice. Parents should have a choice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. David Sirdar, David Sirdar. Um, one, two, we gotta do Zoom. Zoom.
I have Cheryl Smith.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Cheryl Smith. I have four children in Lake County schools. So those are a lot of contacts that I'm putting out there in the world every day when I send my kids to school and within their community if we choose to go somewhere. Everyone's absolutely right, the science is changing. And to answer someone's question earlier, when I had to go into the office at work, yes, I did have to wear a mask all day. My family members who work at local hospitals right now, they are having to wear masks as well, even those who work in the administration buildings. The science does change, but just like with improvements to cars, adding car safety features and airbags, changes to car seats. As the science changes and we learn more, we try and do better. Masks work. While some cloth masks are not as effective, even the worst cloth mask is better than nothing. Covering our mouths when we sneeze is not 100% effective. We still teach kids to do it because it is going to protect other people around them in some way. Doesn't impact the child. We know it's going to prevent some of the spread. So washing your hands, another thing that's not 100% effective at killing germs, doesn't even kill all viruses, but we still have kids wash their hands as a proactive measure against the spread of most germs. Scientific consensus right now is that masks are effective against COVID-19 specifically. Kids do get mask breaks. They are not sitting with a mask on all day. They have areas in the classroom or outside where they can take off their masks. Teachers have been wonderful about this. Kids can get serious illnesses like MISC directly related to COVID-19, even if they have minimal COVID-19 symptoms. This is a risk. You know, we're trying to mitigate risk. It's, it is something that is rare, but it can happen. Kids are being impacted by the Delta variant of COVID-19 in a way that they were not originally impacted by the initial COVID-19 beginning of the pandemic. In June, we had three deaths in the state of Florida during the entire pandemic. So the death rate was extremely low for children under 16, according to the data from the state of Florida. As of September 2nd, so last week's data, 13 children have passed away due to COVID-19. And I would not want to see that number continue to increase. The less positive cases we have in schools, the less disruptions there are to kids learning. We can't ignore this. It's not going to go away. What I would like to see is, you know, we did it last year successfully. I would really like to see as a parent, mask mandates until we have a vaccine available to our kids under 12. And to the person who's been this before, thank you.
Please, please.
Um, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Chris Hokus and I'm a pediatric nurse practitioner and a pediatric mental health specialist in addition to being a psychiatric nurse practitioner. Last week I spoke to the board regarding the rights of special needs students being violated if a safe medical environment could not be provided. For these students, often who are considered medically fragile, not having a mask mandate in place prevents them from attending schools in Lake County. Just as a point of review, each student deemed to have a disability is permitted to attend school and to have their needs met under IDA 2004. Every child in the United States is attended to, is entitled to a FAP, a Free and Appropriate Public Education. And thanks to Oberdy versus the Board of Education, students are guaranteed to have an LRE, a least restrictive environment. Districts can no longer keep a child out of a classroom with their peers if they have even the smallest potential for success. Districts are no longer allowed to house special needs children in buildings separate from the student body. Children with disabilities, or as I like to call them, superpowers, must have their right to be educated alongside their peers and to be in a school community where they can interact socially with those peers. By not providing for a medically safe environment, thus forcing these students to stay home, this county will be in violation for not providing a least restrictive environment. There are multiple Supreme Court decisions and federal appeals court decisions that address this issue. There are also multiple decisions that state that if a, if a family goes to a due process hearing or takes the school board to court, the school board, if found in violation, have to do what we call making the family financially whole. In other words, they have to pay all attorney's fees, all court's fees. This can be a burden onto the county and its taxpayer dollars. I know that your decision is already made. I'm not asking for you to make a different decision because it's already made. What I am asking is for a moment for you guys to pause and consult with your attorney regarding the legal jeopardy you will place this board into and this county into by making this decision. In addition, I am asking that you explain to them, regardless of whether they are pro or anti, that if the Board of Education or we are found in violation, do a court hearing, that they will lose their ability to have input on this because you will not be able to decide this policy. This policy will be given to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Sirdar. If you can do it in Lesson Three, it'd be amazing.
David Sirdar, Furland Park, Florida. You know, my father, I'm from the land of Lincoln. And Abraham Lincoln, you cannot escape the responsibility of tomorrow by evading it today. You know, we're all going to die. We, we now have a moment of silence. Change happens. You know, I go to the state Capitol, there's a pandemics and public emergencies committee that it was on March 2nd. There is a Children and Families and Senior Subcommittee. There is Secondary Education and Career Development Subcommittee. I've been to these meetings in the state Capitol. You know, I was at the school board meeting before here. It's my honor to be in front of the appoint, well, elected officials and the superintendent. You know, last night, there was a Tamaras meeting. And, well, there was a Lake County Commissioners meeting just in this room on Tuesday. I do these kinds of things out of my heart, you know? Salvation Army's going to be helping out at Christmas coming up, but what's happening on 9/11? You know, we had an officer here from the Navy. My dad was an elementary school principal in North Chicago, Illinois, their last bootcamp in the United States in the Navy. All black neighborhoods, they had a problem that the government had to pay taxes for the school children that were coming from the Navy base. There's always a headache, you know, the pandemic's out there, this dude shall pass. But it's the news that doesn't put out everything right. Where did this virus come from? And parents and families? This is our children. I have a son, he was a volunteer in his high school. He's a male nurse, he does pick lines. You know, we know not what, we know what we are, but we know not what we will be. And that's what our kids need to be taught. And our kids need to learn and they need to have behavioral health where, well, it's the parents' rights, but you have a tough, tough call. It's, you know, let us renew our trust in God and go forward without fear. God bless us.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Zoom call.
I have Alicia Wilson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for hearing me today. I just want to come to the board today to let you know that I realize you're hearing a lot of conspiracy theories, you're hearing a lot of data being thrown at you, you're hearing a lot of political agendas, you're hearing a lot from people that do not have children in our Lake County school system currently. I'm coming to you today as a mother. I have two children in the Lake County school system. I also work for a major healthcare organization and I am pro-mask. What this is about is mitigating risk to our children. We know that this Delta variant is hitting children a lot harder. According to CNN Health, children now make up more than 26% of new COVID cases. More children are being hospitalized. Thank you, I can speak. With COVID-19, this isn't about fear, this is about mitigating risk. This is about helping our children and helping our community and our fellow parents. There, I'm coming to you today also as a, with a coworker's, 10-year-old child is in the ICU battling COVID right now. Again, we need to mitigate the risk. We need to do everything that we can to protect the children, as the other person stated too, that have disabilities that should be able to attend school. We need to be thinking about everybody, not just that it's uncomfortable to wear a mask. It's more uncomfortable to be put on a ventilator. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And that, that concludes public input and we ended up with three minutes to spare. So thank you all very much. We now have some, really quickly, those that attend, that are in attendance but elected not to speak. And Mrs. Luke, if you don't mind moving down, you'll read the emails in. We have Banning Sherman, who was in opposition. Taylor Tucker in opposition. Linda Tucker in opposition. Terry Fechtel Strolli in opposition. Joanne Sherman in opposition. Austin Miller in opposition. Erica Miller in opposition. John Venetta in opposition. Diane Venetta in opposition. Stephanie Sherman in opposition. Mayette Renaus in opposition. Nick Vennet, Venetta in opposition. Ryan Vennetta, so if I butchered it once, I butchered it twice. Tammy Heidman in opposition. Natalie Hartsfield in opposition. Sheila Worrell in opposition. Shirley Stalling in opposition. Melissa Lockwood in support. Cassie Armstrong in opposition. Linda Caro in support. And Will Manard in opposition. So those of you that are here and, and elected to show your support without, without speaking, you've saved the clock, just so y'all know. Now, Mrs. Luke, if you'll read in the emails.
Do I need to read the names in or was it just the numbers? I thought we got clarification on that up last week, that's why I'm asking. Do I tell how many were in favor and how many were opposed or do I need to read each name into this record?
It's not required to read the name.
Well, let's go, we only have the room till noon. So let's just get the number.
And these will all be in, they'll be admitted to Natalie, so she'll have record of the names. Right, okay. So if there's any concern about the numbers, they will be in there. So there were 69 votes, or 69 emails that were in favor of a mask mandate. There were 28 in opposition to a mask mandate and there were two with general comment. I expect the board to support the superintendent's targeted plan and asking for Lake Live.
Excellent. So that concludes public input and now let's get to the meat because we have a little under an hour to get, or a little over an hour to get done. So we're on to 3.01. so if everyone remembers, where we ended up with was the superintendent's recommendation. It had been, a motion had been made to accept it, a motion had been made and seconded. And so it's already, that part's already been taken care of. So we're going to start right there with discussion. So now would be the time, if there's any amendments or discussions.
I did want to just make a comment about regarding the graph that we received from Ms. Emery, the LCEA representative that came and spoke. Being a math person, I, there was somebody else that was a math person in this room that spoke. Data like this, graphs like this bother me, if I'm just being honest with you, because it's, it doesn't convey the, the total picture. So I just asked for what is our current number of teachers that we have. This represents 16% of our current teachers, 16%. So of the 16% that responded, 8% basically are in favor of masks and 8% are not. And, and I just feel like that is a more accurate picture of who was even responding. So while I appreciate you putting the data out, I, I, I take very seriously the word of our teachers. I like to listen to their input. They're the ones that are in front of kids. And when I receive a graph that shows 57.6% that are asking for masks to be mandatory, that seems like a significant number of people in this district. But when you look at this as just a 16%, look at the data and that 8% of them are the ones that want masks, it's just a little bit misleading. So I wanted to clarify that, just based on the public input.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Mr. Dodd. You hear me? She had to go to the bathroom. Oh.
Oh, shall we wait? Can we hold?
Yeah. Can we take like a two-minute break?
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't we all just take a two-minute break?
I'll be talking if nobody's talking.
Okay, we're going to take a two-minute break, maybe three. Mr. Dodd.
Oh, sure, thanks. So one of my questions last week was about the, the parent opt-out process. The recommendation here talks about sending a letter to the school principal. And I was just wondering, now that you've had a chance to look back, superintendent with your staff this week, is that, does it look like there might be other options available that we would need to include in this policy or, or is that the best?
There are some options. So one of the things that our IT fix have been able to do, every parent has a Skyward account in which they use to log into their child's grades and other information. And so they were able to create a field within that Skyward account, so a parent would actually log into the Skyward account for their child and they would click a button simply.
account in which they use to log into their child's grades and other information, and so they were able to create a field within that Skyward account, so a parent would actually log into the Skyward account for their child, and they would click a button simply. And that's all they'd be asked to do, click the button. It would then generate a Google Sheet so that the school can maintain a list of all of those that are opting out of any requirement. They can also send a letter if they choose to do so, but entering it directly into Skyward would certainly be the preferred means. So if, since that revision, and again, I was not going to make any recommendations without more discussion, we could certainly make those revisions to the current recommendation to articulate to parents exactly how they can opt out in a more easily manner, which would also be less work for the school sites as well.
That certainly sounds good to me. I guess I'd like to make the amendment there to include a provision to submit notification electronically through Skyward or sending a letter to the school principal.
Okay, you've heard a recommendation from Mr. Dodd, do we have a second to amend?
I'll second with the discussion, just to make sure that I'm keeping up with where we're gonna put that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to amend and a second. Discussion?
Where are we with the judge's stay?
Oh.
But, Mrs. Burns, we have a motion to amend in a second. Let's wrap that one up and then we can, I'll get to it.
No, this is directly related to that. This, this-
No, no it's not. We're talking about, we're talking about how a parent can opt in or out.
Which, it was my understanding that it was based on the governor's orders, and there was just a stay on the governor's orders, which therefore we have, it's my understanding, we have full right to follow the entire law, and therefore we, it is our responsibility to create a policy regarding mask mandates or not.
Okay.
So this is absolutely directly related to this.
I don't think my amendment speaks to whether or not masks-
That's correct.
I think to be germane to this, that we're just looking to say, how would a parent request opt-out? And so-
That is accurate, that is accurate. So, any more discussion?
This is the part where it says, "Where to initiate an opt-out, a parent whose school goes into red will send a letter to the principal stating that they are opting their child out," and then we're gonna put in there the electronic component. Is that correct? That's where-
Right, that's exactly the line I was thinking that-
Okay.
So what do you wanna, what do you want to?
I guess at the end of the, after school principal, you could just include the words "or submit notification electronically through Skyward."
Right.
Okay. All right, you've heard it, Mrs. Cunningham?
I do have a question. How are these notes gonna be housed? Is there someone who's responsible for them, or is there a process where there's gonna be a printed list? I mean, how does it work for the parents who don't utilize Skyward, that send a physical note in?
Someone at the school will take that notification from the parent and actually record it in the Skyward system. So everything will be remained in Skyward, the notes won't operate separately.
Okay, so everything is electronic?
It will be electronic, yes.
And you said the Google Sheet will be updated, so that a Google Sheet would be able to be a live, like a living document that could be continued to add-
That's correct, since the teacher would have access to that to know which students have opted out.
Okay.
So, okay, we've had enough discussion, all those, this is just on the amendment, this is just on the amendment.
Just on the amendment.
On the amendment-
To include the amendment, that's all we're talking about right now.
Okay.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, any opposed? Five oh.
Now can we just-
Okay, now then, I'd like Mr. Johnson to address where we are with the legal side.
The legal side, we're at about where we were going to be a couple of weeks ago. As of earlier in the week, you're aware that the judge who heard the case at the circuit court level entered an order staying the enforcement, or, excuse me, let me back up a second. I get, I'm getting confused by the number of stays. The most recent thing is that last night at 7:30, the governor filed an emergency motion to vacate the judge's order who had vacated the automatic stay. So we anticipate that that's going to be heard fairly quickly. Everything else has been fairly quickly. I mean, the order for the one, for the trial judge vacating the stay had just been heard and had just been ruled on when the governor filed his petition to set it aside. That petition is being heard in the appellate court, which will also be the court that will hear the basic appeal from the Leon County judge's decision from the beginning. So, where are we? We're exactly pretty much where we expected to be. If you're looking for, okay, during what period of times is this the law and what period of time is that the law? The original order that was entered is still on appeal. Whether or not the Department of Health or the Department of Education can enforce any of their special rules that they passed at the last minute is based upon whether there's a stay in effect or not. So that stay has been granted, it has been revoked, and now it's being appealed. So, I think if I had to guess, that we'll hear most likely before the middle of next week, at the latest, what the appellate court's decision is on the revoking the stay of the previous order. It's not something that, it is complicated, I mean, the governor's opinion that he had and used in the appeal is 35 pages long, so it is something that's gonna be complicated to argue. But the first DCA has done this in the past, and they're planning on expediting, and it's what I'm told, so that for today, there is an order vacating the automatic stay. And that order has been appealed, so it's on appeal. So, I can't tell you, well, you know, we're at a position now where you can do whatever you want, and that's inconsistent with the law. Until the appeals time is run and the opportunity for it to go through the appellate court system, I believe that the current status of the law is what it was before the judge's order was entered.
So what was the purpose of the stay? I mean, what was the purpose of overruling the automatic stay?
Pardon me?
What was the purpose of overruling the automatic stay that Judge Cooper ruled on yesterday?
Because that would have been the next thing in the appellate process that they would do to try to present their case, not the judge, the plaintiffs, to present their case would be to set aside. You'll notice that the judge says three or four times in its order that he realizes that setting aside an automatic stay of that nature is an extremely unusual event, so-
Right, what he did to give relief to the school boards.
Right.
So why are we saying that we don't have-
Because it's now been appealed.
Right?
But his decision isn't final until it's appealed.
Until it's appealed-
It is appealed already.
But it hasn't gone through the courts yet, on the appeal?
It is, the appeal is already filed on the original action, okay? From that, from that appeal, there should have been an automatic stay. This circuit judge took that away and said, no, we're not giving you the automatic stay, even though it's very unusual and extraordinary that we're doing that. Which leads me to believe that there's gonna be a difficult standard for that order to be upheld in the appellate court, because if it's unusual by the circuit judge's admission for that to be granted, then that means there's some burden going to be on the plaintiffs to be able to prove that later on. So, the governor has filed his motion to set that order aside, which is an appeal of that, and we will have an order on that, I would assume fairly promptly. I mean, we've, they've been moving this forward in hours rather than days for the most of the motions and orders that have been filed. And I'm assuming they'll go forward and have a ruling on that, and then we'll be left with the appellate action, the argument on the appeal. And during the argument on the appeal, there, we don't know if it's gonna happen or not yet, but there is some likelihood that there'll be an automatic stay for the time that the appeal is pending. I mean, that's-
I guess the perception I'm getting back is this is almost like a very suspenseful movie, and the plot just keeps twisting and turning, and every time you think you might have an idea of predicting the ending, you can't. So I guess based on that, I'd like to make our policy align with not having hypothetical scenarios in it. So I guess with that, I'd like to propose an amendment that we remove the hypothetical portions. From what I could, what I could tell, based on the way the formatting has fallen, the page that we received today, it's the bottom two paragraphs of the front side, which begin with pending any changes to the law, and then medical exemption signed by a licensed physician, and then also the first paragraph on the backside, which begins if the law changes. But then there is one random line in the paragraph that says, "When a school is identified as red," the line is, it looks like the third one down, "The governor's orders and orders from the Surgeon General and Department of Health currently remain in law and prohibit a mask mandate for all." I guess that one is also kind of, you know-
I'm sorry.
The policy wouldn't necessarily align if the law changes with that particular line. So I, my proposal for the amendment is to remove all of those hypothetical lines that I just indicated.
Okay, Mr. Dodd, what do you-
Wait, 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 we have a motion, just one second, we have a motion, and we need a second.
What's in the motion?
No, no, he just made a, he just made a motion. Stay with us.
I can't stay with you. None of us can understand what the hell he's talking about.
Okay, I can-
Excuse me.
I will second for discussion.
Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham.
Mr. Dodd, can you please be more specific on the paragraph that you just referred to?
Sure, absolutely, yes. So, the chunk of the hypothetical or pending any law changes language are full paragraphs. So in the paper that we received today, it's the bottom two paragraphs on the front side, which begin with pending any changes to the law, and then the one following that, medical exemption signed by a licensed physician. And then on the backside, it's the first paragraph that begins with if the law changes.
Mm-hmm.
But then if you remove all of that, there is one hypothetical line that's still in existence, which is one line in the middle on the front side. If you look at the paragraph that says, "When a school is identified as red," most of that paragraph still stands, except the one line in there that reads, "The governor's orders and orders from the Surgeon General and Department of Health currently remain the law and prohibit a mask mandate for all," could become the hypothetical line, because should that law change, then the policy may not be correct with the law.
Thank you.
So we strike that, just that line.
So just that line.
Mm-hmm.
And once, and since we're in discussion, you know, I think the, you point to the rationale, not even within a mass debate of the efficacy of cloth masks, N95s, any of that, it's really just about making a policy that is not hypothetical, based on potential law changes.
Okay, so what you're recommending is that instead of having any sort of mandate, that we have a full parental opt-out for schools that are in the red, is that correct? Yes? Okay, so I wanna address, do we need to-
Okay, so-
I wanna address the fact that this, this was designed with the concept of these red schools not having opt-outs. So, I just, beyond the fact that these percentages are extremely high, even if we were to have a mandate, doing an opt-out is like a, it's like a half measure. So I do not understand why we wouldn't just do that to all schools. Why would we not just have all schools have an opt-out if that's gonna be our policy? Because this, this whole concept was designed with a mandate, and an actual mandate at these schools, which is what they're desperate for, and, you know.
Well, I think, I think that, you know, just in the interest of parliamentary procedure, that seems like it's a different type of topic. I'm just really trying to, my motion is looking at just making this policy align with law and not be hypothetical. I think what you're asking for is that-
That is accurate, that is accurate.
Percentage would be, that all schools would be, if you're at .01 or greater, then you're in the red.
But, we don't want to debate right now the forms, what we're trying to do is get the document, and then we'll be voting on the document next, and that would be the time.
Hold on.
That would be the time to discuss what you're saying. But right now, Mr. Dodd has made a motion to remove items that we are bound by law, and these items are hypothetical. So, so this would be the time that we remove those, so we have a document that we can then, Dr. Burns, debate the merits of what you're talking about. So, okay? All right, all those in favor, signify by a say.
I haven't heard a second to this motion.
Mrs. Cunningham made it, Dr. Tibbetts.
I second it for discussion.
We got it, we got it, okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Four one. Okay, so now, it passes.
I got one more, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Because the document we're looking at gives a range of identifying the yellow between 3 and 4.9, but I think all of our data is going out to two decimal places, so I'd propose an amendment here that we change the 4.9 to 4.99.
Okay, you've heard Mr. Dodd's recommendation, do we have a second?
I'll second just for discussion, I'm gonna look at the data report.
Okay, and we have a second. So now for discussion.
I'm just nervous about what happens when it's 4.96. Does that now round based on the policy to five, but our data goes to two decimal places?
That's correct.
And is coded-
That's a good catch, that's a really good catch. So removing it to two decimal places, okay? Anybody? Any more discussion?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause for the math person to-
I just was, I was just curious about the impact, and right now it wouldn't impact anybody, but I, I understand your point.
So move it two decimal places is the motion?
Yeah.
And the second, okay? You've heard the motion and the discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? That one's five oh. Okay. All right, now then, we're into the document itself. So, Dr. Burns, you wanna speak to it?
Yeah, I would, I would wonder if, I'm just, I'm really disappointed at the theater of all of this. I have to say, I grew up here, I was born here and raised here, and I do not think that this argument at all reflects Lake County. I'm so very disappointed. One thing that we all agreed on when I was growing up was that God helps those who help themselves. And we had a principal stand up here and beg us for help last week, and we turned her away. I then sat through a meeting where she begged every student at our school to please wear masks, because we are losing parents. I understand that our, gosh, you know, I learned to say yes sir and no sir. I learned to talk to my elders and listen to them. And we learned to take care of each other, and what we're doing is not that. We're not. We got kids that are sick. I have letter, I have a letter from my mother-in-law, and you all got that. My very favorite part is where she explains to you how this is not political, because if it was, she and I would not agree. But I do wanna point out that they've been seeing up to 150 patients a day. They're turning away between 20 and 30 patients. They have set up a tent. These people are in Montora. These are our doctors. This is old Doc Carlson calling me. He has birthed almost all of adults my age in Lake County on the north end. Our doctors are calling out to you guys for help, to you guys, our doctors, my family that I married into, everybody in Eustis knows the Carlsons, and the whole Ken, and all of my cousins, and everyone else, and they're begging me for help. At least three pediatric patients have died of COVID in Orlando recently. There have been numerous cases of post-COVID inflammatory illness, including myocarditis. Children are experiencing long COVID. She, I'm just pointing out a few things. The mark of a true leader is to be able to change direction mid-course if changes on the ground, if conditions on the ground change. While the conditions sure have changed, children are getting seriously ill and dying from COVID-19. We know how to fix this. We know that masks, social distancing, and good hand washing, they've been recommended by the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics. Additionally, she wanted to make sure you guys knew that every student athlete that's had COVID must have cardiac clearance before they return to play, and that that may be a liability for our district. I've heard plenty from all the gallery, and so much is misinformation, and that makes me very sad, and I'm sorry that- makes me very sad, and I'm sorry that people will not listen to our doctors, but our doctors are reaching out and calling us. This is a public health matter. When we have a public pool, you can't foul it. And that's what's happening right now. We need to wear masks so that our kids can go back to school, and our kids can be in school, and that we're taking care of all of our kids. And that includes those kids that are ESE. And sometimes you have to protect those kids by surrounding them with other kids that can protect them. This is not a parental rights issue. This is a public.
Excuse me. Sir, sir. Please, 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 this is her time. Please be respectful.
Health issue. This is a public.
No, 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 no. No, no, no. Excuse me. I will not allow outbursts, I'm telling you all. Go ahead.
Here, we have increased, we started out the school year, y'all, with 50 cases. All right? Last week, we had 594 sick kids, kids that are sick.
But.
And last year, the most we had was 100 at our highest peak. That's five times the amount of sickness, and it shows that we are spreading. This wouldn't be increasing like that if it wasn't spread.
But, Dr. Burns, with all the data you're sharing, what we've already pretty much heard, if we could stay to this issue, and I would submit to you that us identifying the red, green, yellow, and red is taking action.
No.
We are saying that we will put mask mandates in, but we still are going to preserve the parents' right to opt-out.
If you're going to.
What is wrong with that? Okay. Let's move.
What's wrong with that is that masks are a preventative measure, and now you.
Excuse me, can we, please let us have this dialogue.
And, listen, I, you know, I know you guys don't care about the Epi guy, but I did run it by University of Florida, the dean of the University of Florida School of, um, Epi stands for, you know, I ran it by him, and, and he told me, I read it to the superintendent as well, that, um, masks are preventative. What we're trying to do is put a Band-Aid on an open wound.
But no one.
On a, on a bleeding, on a bleeder.
But we are.
You're trying to put a Band-Aid on a bleeder, and if you're going to give parental opt-out, which, fine, give it to everybody, because why wouldn't you? Why?
Why would we go man, why, why is there a feeling that we have to mandate it district-wide when we, when we've proven? Look at the number of green. Three quarters are green.
You haven't proven anything except for the fact that.
What is wrong with giving parental rights, and let's identify schools that we need to address?
These are, these numbers, these cutoffs are completely arbitrary.
It's 5%.
It is completely arbitrary and has no scientific basis whatsoever. What they did was they averaged this, and then you, and then they said that these red ones are outliers. Our average is far too high. We are at the peak of pandemic conditions.
So, so are you, are you questioning, are you questioning the validity of this?
Absolutely, and I've been questioning it.
I thought you were comfortable with it.
I was comfortable with a mask.
Did you not meet, did you not meet and you were comfortable with it?
What?
Did you meet with the district yesterday?
Yes, and both times I told them I was not comfortable with this, and I said this many times, and then I had them change this.
Then have you got something you proposed? If you're not comfortable with this.
I was allowed to propose something. The superintendent is the one making a recommendation.
If you're questioning the methodology.
Okay.
We would hope.
I will propose that we do, that if we're going to throw away the concept of an actual mask mandate, that we simply do a mandate with parental opt-out for all schools. If that's the route you want to go, then do it.
That is not where we are right now. We already four.
That's exactly where you are.
We, we, no, we are not, we are, and this amendment has nothing to do with a district-wide. We have already, we have said as a four-one vote, we're not going to mandate.
But you just took all of the teeth out of it. You ruined it. You just ruined it.
No, no, no. At this point, at this point, we're, at this point, we're following the law. We're following the law.
Right.
And we're preserving parental choice.
You, of course, will protect, your, every single, do you need to clear the audience? Because that's something that is within your purview, Bill.
I am not clearing the room right now. I do ask you all to be respectful, please.
I.
And because someone speaks out, do not take everything personal, like legit.
I need to be able to speak.
Yeah, I'm hearing.
I'm being talked over.
Okay.
Now, from, yeah.
Do we have some data? And, and I, I only know Orange County numbers, but I think there's other counties that we've looked at. So I know Orange County, and I kind of laughed, just to be honest with you. It was about three weeks ago that I dropped my niece off at school in Orange County, seven fifteen in the morning. And they had a sign on the front of the building that said masks are mandatory unless you bring a note. And that kind of made me laugh, because like you said, the teeth in that. At that point in time, they had 92% of their kids wearing masks. They only had an 8% opt-out.
Which is why I would, I recommended it.
But my point is, you say it takes all the teeth out, yet we do see that when there's a mask mandate in place with a parental opt-out, you still have over 90% of the students following that, which is more than what we have now. You would agree with that.
Yes, I would agree.
And if I remember at the beginning of this, this conversation back in August, you said, let's do a red, yellow, and green. Let's do something.
I said a district-wide yell.
Something. This is a district-wide red, yellow, green.
Yes, but what she did was she took the 3%, which is supposed to be a community-wide number, and she applied it to schools. And let me explain that that creates 5,000 per capita. In our schools, we, at 5%, you're at 5,000 students per capita. In the general public, it's around 500 to 600 per capita. So it's tenfold higher to follow this. The danger is tenfold higher when you're at 5% than it is in the general public because of the number of students in the school. The math on this is messed up. This is not what I presented. If you're going to have like a complete opt-out with parents, I'm still okay with that because of that 8%. It's a half measure, but it gets us somewhere. But why just do it for five schools, for eight schools? Do we all have to have everybody get sick and lose parents before we do anything at all?
So, so let me ask you this, and we have, like, several thoughts are coming to my mind when you're speaking this, but I've got Eustis Elementary School, like, on this list that has eight cases, but I'm going to mask the whole school? And so that's, I understand what you're saying.
So you're going to mask the whole school with a parental opt-out. So if somebody feels very strongly, they can opt-out. And if not, we're saying, right now, we're at the top of a pandemic. Our hospitals are shutting down.
If we're at the top of a pandemic, then.
We're bringing, we're bringing in morgues.
And I hear what you're saying, but I also watched college football Saturday in a 90,000 stadium.
I know.
So, so, and let me, wait, wait, wait. Let me explain, let me explain. You've been talking a lot. Let me explain that. Alachua County, we had this conversation yesterday. The Alachua County has a low number of, they are, they look really good in the state of Florida. They're, they have an entire community, their entire county requires masks, so not just schools, right? Schools is, you said putting a Band-Aid on a gaping wound. So let's put masks on our school kids, but there's no mask mandate anywhere else in Lake County. So we are not accounting for the population of Lake County. We're accounting for our students in schools, and they're still going other places. Somebody said that. They don't just go home to their parents. The other question about Alachua County, they've mandated it for everybody, but then if you watch the Gator game, and a lot of people did, there was one mask in that 90,000 people that are sitting there. So I just feel like, like, it's, like you said, it's all or, it's all or nothing. It's, and that's what makes it so frustrating. I'm just going to tell you, that's what makes it super frustrating, is that we see, we see, and I've kind of just looked at the data despairingly, but you see, there are schools that have come from the red, and they're coming down from it. There are schools in the yellow, they're going up. But the trend, the bell curve that's being set, and I don't understand where we would get the data to do a community, a community.
We wouldn't.
We would never have that data. So to try to look at our population of students, and even then, there's not like a set trend. Like, I, just a couple of weeks ago, I told you, Eustis Elementary looked great, Eustis High School looked pretty good, but Eustis Heights and Eustis Middle School were not. But now they're coming down from it. So it's just interesting to see that the community isn't even aligning, where there was a high school and an elementary school that were fine, and another elementary school and a middle school that were not. So I just, I don't see the consistency in that, Dr. Burns. And what I like about this, what I really like about this is governor stay, no governor stay. Governor's order, constitutional right, all of those things, take them all away and give us, this school board, the decision-making product. This will meet people in the middle. It provides preventative measure when we see that there is more risk involved, if we're talking about students that are autistic and they watch other, we got an email that said they watch other students and they take their masks off because other students aren't wearing masks. It helps the, the students that are having ideology of suicide, because they're not going to be in their masks every single day, because there's not as high of a risk in their buildings. We wore masks all school year last year, all school year. And I don't know that we had to do that at this point. Like, I look back and think, we could have had this conversation last year in March, maybe taken them off. So I don't want to put a measure in place just to do it. We don't do things to kids just to do them.
I don't think we do things to kids either. I agree. No, no, I, I, I hear what you're saying. Um, I, what I, what, what is very confusing to me is all these people that literally just stood up and told me and every parent that wants to be preventative that, um, masks, that they don't care if my kid wears a mask, but clearly they do care. They don't want my kid to have to wear a mask because if so, they could opt-out. That's what an opt-out is. So why would they have any problem with an opt-out policy for the whole county? Because that's what parental rights do. You would opt-out if you have a problem.
But, but from the very beginning and to my core, we don't mandate. Like, why would we do a district mandate when we don't?
Because we're in a pandemic, Bill, and there, and morgues are coming.
We have, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight schools out of 43.
That are randomly assigned as our most worst schools. That doesn't mean that Cypress Ridge with 11 kids or 17 at South.
So, before we get too deep in the woods, we don't, we already had, we already had a discussion early on on our original protocols, which, which we did not do a district-wide mandate. So that's not what we're talking about today. What we're talking about is amendment based on this scenario of identifying schools, which the principals actually asked for, and we're meeting that. We are giving them support. So we, so we're not leaving them in a lurch. And I think that as our teachers and students become educated, they'll put, they'll begin to take care of their own communities, just like we take care of our communities around this county.
So I would recommend that we modify, if you want this policy, I would recommend that we modify this so that yellow, uh, red starts at 1%. Because below that.
Excuse me, excuse me. Okay, so we have a motion to amend. Do we have a second? Motion fails for no second.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a mathematical question, because I've heard this claim multiple times that, that this 5% is completely random. But I think, you know, my conversation with Mr. Zemora, and I, I don't know, I don't know if we can put him on the spot here, but I think he gave, you know, some good insight about the standard deviation relationship to that. And I think that would provide a little bit of clarity, since that column does exist here, and help folks understand just the rationale behind that. Would that, would that be all right?
Do you mind coming up and giving us about one and a half minutes? We do have to be out of here by noon, so.
4:97.
No, no, no. Please. Okay. After he explained it to me, by the way, it was, I needed to phone a friend. Go ahead.
Well, good morning, Board. And to answer, to answer your question, basically, we looked at the average cases reported for COVID for the district. That average stands at a certain measure. Then we looked at the cases reported per school. We compared their proportion to the average of the district. That number that shows you as a standard deviation puts pretty much, at one standard deviation reflects an approximation of 5% as the cut score of looking at the whole spread of the data, looking at it over. So when I, when I look at numbers, I'm taking away what it signifies, what we're talking about, the context of it. I'm just looking at numbers. I'm looking at that at one standard deviation away from the population, I have outliers at the top end. Okay? So we are identifying the schools that are noticeably having or reporting a higher amount of cases than what the norm is in a world of pandemic.
Right. Which is what I told you.
And would it.
That's not random.
And would it not, didn't, there was a discussion about if the district average changes. So we talked yesterday, or we, we talked in our meeting yesterday, just whenever we were going over the data, that right now, the district average is 3%. Is that correct? But if the average increases to 4% or 5%, which potentially could change the standard deviation, we are not going to do that. We're not going to make it a bigger standard deviation to adjust the percentage to 6% or to 7% based on the average changing. So it will actually capture more schools in red if our average increases district-wide. So we are not adjusting this formula for that. 3% is the bar at this point, is what my understanding was, and that if we don't adjust that, that it will not, it will actually impact this chart to include more red if the district average increases.
Can I ask what the number of schools you guys would be comfortable with?
The ones in red.
Yeah, but it's random. It, it's.
He just explained it.
Let me explain, let me explain, because he is doing something that's, he's doing a mathematical calculation, but you have to actually apply the science to math, like you don't just create a policy that has nothing to do with logic. So what he's done is he said, or what the district has done, is they've said, okay, our doctors are phone-calling us, kids are getting sick, the morgues are, are coming in, and the hospitals are full. Please don't tell me the hospitals aren't full, because you know what? My own child couldn't go to one. So, um.
Please.
So what he, they've done is, is we are at the top of a pandemic peak. We are all saying this is an emergency, and something's wrong, we need to fix it. And so he said, what's the average of an emergency? And then what's the outliers of an emergency? Like, who's, who in an emergency, or is the absolute worst that we have to triage? That's the red. Okay? The greens are all still in emergency, because we are at the top of a pandemic's, uh, peak right now. So you're right about changing the percentages, Stephanie, absolutely. But if the next, if, and, and, I don't know, but if the next wave comes, we aren't going to notice it if it's, if, if that variant is less, um, less toxic, right? We are going to notice if, if the variant is more virulent, more toxic, or more catchy. Um, and therefore, you want to put your preventatives in place earlier rather than as your Band-Aid on a gaping wound. So I, I can see from your face you understand what I'm saying, so I'm going to stop.
Good. One of the other components, I think, that I was asking for last go-around was more information from the Health Department. And I can certainly appreciate the, the conversation I had on the phone with the representative of the Health Department, but I can also appreciate the email that the superintendent forwarded us from Aaron Kistler, which gives some data. And as we're talking about kids are getting sick, in, in his email to us, he noted that we've had one since this all began back in March 2020. Number, one kid of, kid under 18, he required an ICU stay. So as we're talking about who's filling up the hospitals, and once again, we look back to.
Delta is different.
Since March of 2020 to the present, what, according to his email. I'm, I'm just, I'm just giving you the information that the Health Department has provided us. And that, uh, also, he included a graph, and his line says, "This graph shows how well our schools are doing. This summer, we actually hit a higher percentage of cases in 5- to 18-year-olds when school was not even in session." So I guess if I'm compiling that information from the Health Department, and also looking at this plan that is very surgical in nature and very targeted and very well-thought-out to, to look at where are our statistical outliers, where are the areas that you are going to try to place your Band-Aids, I, I reconcile all that, and I, and with that, I guess, I mean, I'm ready to support the superintendent's plan as amended.
Can I explain?
Okay, do we have, can we, can we let Mrs. Cunningham speak?
Thank you. Um, you know, Dr. Burns, I, I feel your passion. I truly do. And I, I hear you, and I think everyone else does. But I think that we have come to a point where we gotta make a decision. We could stay forever, and we could continue to, and I don't think anyone's opinion is gonna change. However you feel, you're gonna feel. And I think it's time that we do our job as school board members, and we step up to the plate, and we vote. Everybody's not gonna agree with us, but we have to make the very best decision that we can make. We've all done our homework. We've all had conversations with doctors, we've all had the Health Department. I've sat in on conference calls with epidemiologists. I got the same emails you did. I got your mother-in-law's email, I have a lot of respect for her. Dr. Carlson was the pediatrician for my children. But now I think it's time that we vote. I think it's time for us to do our jobs. I think we've debated until there's nothing left to debate.
And you don't feel like doing our jobs is part of that, would be, um, actually trying to help treat the other 30 schools that are in, in desperate straits as well?
I think that it is our job to work with our fellow board members to try and convince them of our position, but when we reach a point where it is obvious that we all believe as we believe, then I think it's time to vote.
Do you understand, Molly, that this is our job?
I absolute--
It is our job to adjust this. It's, it is not our job to simply just checkmark what the superintendent presents. And I, I told her twice in two meetings that I disagreed with this.
Okay.
And she obviously disagrees.
And I agree, I agree, Dr. Burns, that you have the right to disagree. I have the right to disagree. So does every other board member. But at a point where we have disagreed until there's no point of arguing, we gotta make a decision. I don't want to have these people come back again. I don't think that's right. I think it's time to vote.
And just to, just to clarify, did the, did the proposed amendment to adjust the, the, um, cutoff scores, uh, that failed for lack of a second? Is that right? So, so I, I think we're probably off the topic of--
That is, that is correct.
Um, I, I've got, I've got one question that I, I, I don't think is, is, you know, controversial to the, to the plan, but just really, just so folks understand the process. Um, and, and that, that pertains to charter schools. I think some of the correspondence we've received from last week is, wait a second, I don't see the charters here listed here. Uh, and, and so I was wondering if somebody might be able to speak to, this board's authority to enforce what happens in charter schools, or lack of authority to enforce what happens there, uh, just, just so folks can direct their comments appropriately if, if they have a kid who attends a charter school.
That's pretty easy. We have no control over charter schools. So if you have an issue, contact your charter school.
Thank you.
All right, Bo. Okay, now, are we ready to vote? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we had a, we had a motion in a second.
Motion in a second.
For this.
For this, as amended. Yeah, we're all good to go. We're ready to vote now.
Wait, hold on. Since this is the district safety protocols, I would like to recommend that we add, um, uh, mandating our K-8 teachers to wear masks.
Wait a minute, please. You've heard, you've heard Dr. Burns' recommendation. Do we have a second?
I would like to mandate that we--
Motion dies due to lack of a second.
Um, can we mandate that we follow federal law and, um, have students on the buses wear masks?
Federal law? Is there a federal law?
Public transportation.
I heard the--
Public transportation.
Somebody talked about something to do with buses. I haven't seen it before.
I sent it to you.
I don't want, no, you, wasn't, I just saw it here this morning for the first time.
All right, Dr. Burns is--
If I may, I, I don't want the board to be saying that we will follow federal law--
Oh.
--any more than I wanted that contingency in the agreement that if the law changes to something differently, because it could change. So, you know, if you want to make a motion about something to do with buses and masks, that's fine, but I wouldn't preface it with what you suggested.
Okay.
Okay.
So, okay, given that our buses are overcrowded, and can we mandate masks or masks with an opt-out with, on buses?
Okay. You've heard Dr. Burns' recommendation. Do we have a second?
Can I second for a conversation, please?
Okay.
So this and, this, this, um, current protocol speaks to, um, buses when the school is in red? Is that correct? I'm looking for it, but--
That is correct.
How, how does that even work? So the, the school, the, okay, so then the bus driver will have one route with masked kids and other routes without masked kids?
Potentially.
Potentially, yes. And you, and, and that's what this board wants?
As opposed to having them just have every route mandatory?
Well, I mean, I would love to look at percentages--
Okay, can we stay with this?
I, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's definitely, it's hard to say that it's not crowdeder on a bus. I mean, how much more clothes do you want to get?
Okay. You've heard the discussion and the recommendation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Nay. You didn't vote.
Wait, for which, what are we voting?
Your motion.
My own? Aye. I missed that.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I thought we were voting on the original motion.
No, 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 no. We're voting on the amendment, because it got a second.
Okay.
Okay, so let's go back again, we'll do a retake?
Can you repeat the question?
Okay. It is, it is her motion, and she wants to make mass, mass, she wants to add an amendment to make masks mandatory.
On, on, yeah.
On buses.
Can I ask a question before you vote again?
Yeah, you have one second. Go ahead.
I know, that's why I'm saying, then my wheels are turning a little bit. So knowing that we have some buses that are, are stacking routes because of lack of bus drivers, um, the concern that I would have is that you might have kids that are in a red school on a bus, on a bus with a school that is yellow or green. Is that an accurate statement?
Um, no. I don't believe so. I think that each route is specific to the schools. There might be a few that might be going to one of our special sites, but typically, no, they're, they're designated--
So you wouldn't, right, you wouldn't have somebody like going to Seminole Springs Elementary School and then Astute Elementary School?
No.
Those are not even close to one another, but--
Right.
Okay, okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, okay.
Okay, now are we ready to vote?
Sure.
Okay. We're voting on the amendment right now only. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Is that four, one? Okay, four, one.
One, four.
One, four.
Huh?
One, four.
One, four, four against. Got it. Okay. Now, we're ready to vote on the amendment to the district's safety protocol as amended through this board's action?